Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting for Monday, October the 9th, 2017. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could all please rise and please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Matheson, Golden Hills Seventh Day Advantage Church, 3005 Golden Boulevard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, I thank you for the opportunity that we have to be here this evening to conduct the business of our town. Lord, I pray that you would be with each person here. Thank you for the interest that each person has in what is happening here. Please fill this meeting with your presence, with your wisdom, with your understanding. Lord, I thank also of the many members of our communities that serve in the armed forces. Lord, I pray that you would protect them and guide them in the work that they do. Thank you for the promise of your presence. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Martenson. Second item is roll call, please. Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
And Mr. Modri.
Here.
Thank you. Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted the entry to the council chambers. Item 3, approval of agenda, consent agenda, minutes and advisory committee reports.
Item A is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you.
Item B is the approval of the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion unless a city council member or a citizen so requests, in which event it will be removed from consent status and placed in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 1 is the approval of the minutes of the September 25, 2017, meeting in minutes of the September 20, 2017, special meeting of the city council. Item 2, acknowledge receipt of minutes of the September 21 meeting of the Planning Commission. Item 3, approval of claims. Item 4, approval of applications for waivers of hunting regulations. Mayor, council members, are there any of these items you'd have removed from consent status?
Two items, sir. I would ask that we remove the minutes of the September 25 meeting from the consent agenda. And I just have a quick comment on one of the claims. And this is just for the public. Under information technology, it says we're paying $27,342 for belt clips. We are not paying that for belt clips. It is 10 radios. So that's just a misprint. So that bill is fine. I have no objection to the bill, but yeah, we just need to be careful about the annotations. Thank you.
Are there any others? Do we have, I don't think we had a motion to accept the consent agenda. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda minus the minutes of the September 25 meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you.
Well, then we should take up the minutes of the September 25, 2017, minutes of meeting of the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Maginelli. On the top of page 3, where we were talking about the firefighter retirement committee, in the minutes it states that Mr. Shannon called a point of order because by amending the bylaws, the council only has authority to approve citizens, members of the committee. I'd like to strike the words "by amending the bylaws." The statute, the state statute, limited us to approving the two citizen members, not the amendment. So we need to strike the words "by amending the bylaws" so that we accurately reflect the meeting. So I would move to amend that.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. We need to approve now the original.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the September 25.
You've got a motion to amend. Let's vote on that and then we'll.
Well, we don't have an underlying motion, so do a motion to approve it first.
I'll do a motion to approve the minutes of the September 25 meeting.
Second.
Second by.
I'll move that we amend the minutes by striking the words "by amending the bylaws."
Hold on a second. Susan, did you get the second? Great, sorry.
Okay. Now I'm moving to amend the bylaws by striking the words "by amending the bylaws."
You mean amend the minutes?
Amend the minutes, yes.
Second.
And second by Mr. Preister. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
On the amendment.
All voting yes.
Thank you.
Now we vote on approving the minutes.
As amended.
As amended. Any questions or discussion on that? See none, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you.
Item 4 is approval of claims. You didn't wish to withdraw the claim of that, okay. Claims were then approved as part of the consent agenda. Special presentations is number 5. We have none. Item 6, liquor licenses, we have none. Item 7, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Item A is ordinance number 3884, amending section 8-41 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the definition of dangerous buildings. At our last meeting, the ordinance was amended by an affirmative vote, but the ordinance as amended was not approved.
Slow it down. Mr. Modri.
We just need to vote.
Mr. Modri.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance 3884 as amended at the last meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? Please vote.
Five voting yes, one voting no.
Thank you.
Item B is ordinance number 3885, rezoning lots 1 through 107 and outlots A through H, Belalago from AG to RE RG 50PS and RG 28PS. With site plan approval, the applicant is Boyer Young Development, general location, 48th Street and Cape Heart Road. Subitem 1 is the approval of the preliminary plat for lots 1 through 107 and outlots A through H, Belalago.
Mr. Cook.
Mayor, I have just a couple of questions. I talked to Mr. Schuchuck this afternoon, and I think someone that represents this development is here. My question is, lots 1 through 75 were approved back in May by the council, and there was no variance to the setbacks. And today, I know you've purchased some additional land for lots for new homes and also for some apartments. So my question is that today we're looking at approving lots 1 through 107, and we want a variance on the front yard setback from 35 feet to 25 feet, and the rear yard setback from 25 feet to 20 feet. And I guess, looking at the plat, looking at the alignment of the roads and how everything was set up for lots 1 through 75, my question is, is why are we asking for this variance now when back in May we approved it without it?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, are you job in 11440 West Center Road appearing on behalf of the developer Boyer Young Development? The only thing I can say, Mr. Cook, about that is sometimes it's good that you have these revised preliminary plat processes because my understanding is it was just an oversight on the first preliminary plat that came before you, unfortunately. But had that preliminary plat been the same one that we were going to the final plat on, we would be requesting that waiver with the final plat. It is the same villa product that they were going to build as part of the prior submittal and the prior preliminary plats with still the $300,000 average cost. Most of the, my understanding is most of the waivers relate to a lot of the lots that are along the pond, but I think there are some other lots in the subdivision that would require those waivers, but not all the lots require the waiver. But simply put, I apologize, but it was an oversight, and that's why we're fixing that here with this revised preliminary, in addition to, you know, taking the development from what, 30 acres to 60 acres with this proposed preliminary plat.
Part of my concern is, is we've recently made changes to our, the aligning of the sidewalk. And I think now we go, I think we go in about 11 feet where the sidewalk would start from the house to the beginning of the sidewalk. And if we go down to 25 feet front yard and we eliminate 11 feet, we subtract 11 feet, we're about 14 feet. And part of my concern is, is I don't think you can even park two cars bumper to bumper without the second car being maybe in, in the sidewalk blocking type situation. And that's one of my concerns. Something separate, will the sewer line being put in on the north side of the property service the property to the west of this development, on the west side of 48th Street?
Maybe that's.
We've spoken with the engineers for this project and the engineers for the project to the west. They will extend the sewer in Lawnwood Street to 48th Street and size it to serve both the 80 acres directly at the corner of 48th and Cape Heart, plus the 80 acres to the south, next south, before we get to Lions Gate.
Would that require a pump station?
It will for that short distance between the corner of 48th Street and up to where it goes, where it goes to gravity on Lawnwood Drive.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
I was just going to mention that that setback goes from the right of way, it doesn't go from the curb. So just, so you're aware of that.
Yeah, and I guess my thought is, is that the sidewalk now is 11 feet into the property. And that's a little bit of my concern, but.
Well, and we're probably saying the same thing, but it's 11 feet into the right of way. It's not into the yard.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Jobin? Mr. Sha, no.
There.
Mr. Maginelli.
If the council's ready to make a motion, let me read the title of this ordinance. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about South 48th Street and Cape Heart Road, more particularly described in section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Mr. Shannon.
Question for staff.
Would that be, Mr. Schuchuck?
Two weeks ago, when this hit first reading, I requested that we provided a park plan so that we know where on Cape Heart we're going to put a park, because we're contributing to a park. We're not going to make little parks in the individual subdivisions anymore. We're told we're going to have one big park somewhere. I'd like to know where this park is going. And at the same time, I asked for someone to provide me a map showing where the commercial corridor is going to go to service this neighborhood, where the neighborhood business is going to go, because we keep approving subdivisions and we're putting lots right up along Cape Heart. Somewhere we've got to have a business corridor so that we can have some neighborhood businesses serving all these people that are moving in.
I'm passing around an item right now that addresses the park question, I believe. Well, I'm waiting for you all to get that. As far as the commercial land, at the corner of 36th and Cape Heart Road, within a half mile of this area, there is approximately 32 acres of undeveloped commercial land. I think there is plenty to serve this general area at this point in time. I guess I don't see the, a need for a corridor, as you say, of commercial, as a long strip of commercial. At the major nodes, there are major corners, yes. Again, that does happen at 36th and Cape Heart, which is already zoned for commercial. With respect to the parks, the area I provided you, let's start with number 1 and 2 on the map there. These are the areas, are the 80 acres, two 80 acre parcels just on the west side of 48th Street. We've already spoken with the developer of number 1 and had him put his park area on the south property line of that 80 acres. And when number 2 comes in, we'll have them join that, that park area to have a larger park for serving both subdivisions rather than just two small parks, which are, you know, we don't really care for and end up being a maintenance issue when they come into the city limits. Number 3 and 4, over, south of Belalago and east of 48th Street, join the, the park area that's already in Clear Water Falls. And when those develop, we would have that, those two can extend their park area to add on to the Clear Water Falls area. Let me say that the drawings, the lines I put on here don't represent a specific, you know, an amount of land. When they come in, we see how many houses there and we'll look at how many acres they'll need to contribute for park land, and we'll add them on to this, to the Cape, to the Clear Water Falls property. And I know that lot 4, area number 4 there is in the process of going up for sale, so hopefully that'll be coming in, in the near future for platting. 5, 6, and 7 are all owned by the same entity, and I envision something a bit larger to serve all three of those lots. That's approximately 120, 140 acres or so, up kind of in the middle that will serve all of these areas, 5, 6, and 7 in the future when they develop. Then, of course, we've got the larger area in Daniel Farm that is slated via either a community or regional park, depending on how that develops in the future. And I would envision trails as well, you know, trails coming out of Clear Water Falls. We've got a trail coming up 48th Street on the west side of the road already that Cedar Grove and Lions Gate are putting in. It'll be part of that area number 1 when it comes in, and then 2 also when it comes in for a trail along the road.
And along Cape Heart, let's say at 48th or at 60th or somewhere further out on Cape Heart, are we, are we designating something in the future plan of the city to have some commercial lots?
We, we don't go out to 60th Street in our jurisdiction at Cape Heart Road. We only go to what the line that would be 40, or 54th Street, halfway between 48th and 60th Street, the half mile section there. And it really lines up with the edge of lots 1 and 2 now, or parcel 1 and 2, and Lions Gate and Cedar Grove. So at this time in our comp plan, we don't have a, a commercial area designated there other than the area at 36th and Cape Heart Road.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to comment in terms of the parks, we do have the 100 and approximately almost 20 acres at Daniel's Farm area that has been designated as a regional park. It's needing to be developed, but there's a lot of wooded area there, a lot of wonderful old oak trees where trails could go through that would serve that whole geographic area and was intended to do so in the master parks plan in terms of a large center for people to be able to go to. The other thing I might comment on, former councilman Sanders used to complain about what he called ditch parks. Those.
Samborn.
Samborn, I'm sorry if I said the wrong name. Good for a little levity anyway, so maybe it isn't so bad. But ditch parks tend to be where there's a waterway and trees, and those are such fun places for kids. They're not necessarily bad parks, and developers, when they don't develop a park, put money aside that is given to the city for parkland. So there is an alternative to doing the parks with the money and the funds that they give to us. And some of these areas that are creek areas and treat areas are just natural places for kids to go and play. So they're not necessarily, just because they're small, a bad thing, and each one needs to be looked at individually, which is what you're asking, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions? We didn't have a motion yet, did we? Are you, are you following, too? Thank you.
I, I guess where I'm at on this development is I can support approving the plan, approving the plat, but I can't support the variances he's asking for. If we stick people with 14 feet of usable driveway, you can't park a car in 14 feet.
Not 14 feet, it's 25.
Mr. Schuchuck.
I'm going to say the same thing that Mr. Sullivan just said. They still have a 25-foot front yard setback, and then the area where the sidewalk and the grass between, another, about 12 feet between the end of their property and the curb, in addition to the 25 feet that is on their property.
Mr. Hanson.
Well, you know, when I look at the variance here, I mean, these are all villas. These are not single, I mean, they're a single family, but they're not, they're, they're not actually stand, they're standalone, but it's all part of that project. And when you start looking at a lake around there and you try to fit everything in there with that top, you know, that, that area, so I mean, I would support this change, you know, I don't see any issue with it. It's not like it's all one great big cornfield and they're building, you know, houses there, so. I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and support ordinance 3885.
Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion, Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, just as a point of clarity, because it sounded like there was some confusion. A street is 50 foot wide of dedication. The road is 25 foot wide put in the middle. So there's 12 and a half feet on each side of the curb that is still dedicated right of way that your property line doesn't, isn't up to the curb. So you have to go 12 and a half feet off of the curb to get to your property line. Then it's 25 feet to the house.
Are there any other questions? We have a motion. Susan, we're good? And a second? Any further discussion? See none, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you.
We need a motion on the preliminary plat.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve the preliminary plat for lots 1 through 107, outlots A through H, Belalago.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you.
Item C is ordinance number 3886, amending section 8.05 of the zoning ordinance regarding wireless communication towers and antennas. I'll read the title. An ordinance to amend section 8.05 of ordinance number 3619, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to wireless communication towers and antennas. To repeal such section as heretofore existing, to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Mr. Shannon.
Question for staff on this. Because we're, we're talking about wireless communication towers and antennas, just antennas by themselves, okay? We're talking about all the existing TV antennas in town and in, within our jurisdiction here. So do we need to have something in this ordinance that grandfather's in all existing antennas so that these rules don't suddenly apply? Because right now, these rules say that people would have to provide screening and hide their antennas, and so are we going to make a whole bunch of people change, is my question?
We would not. Anything that's out there, when we change the rules, is grandfathered in, becomes a legal non, or legal non-conforming use if that's the case. So we don't make anybody go back and conform to the rules after they go on.
No. Essentially, what it would be is that they were legal when they were put in, so they remain legal, but they're non-conforming, meaning that if for some reason they had to replace it and pull a new permit, they'd have to comply with the new rules.
And a second question. In the ordinance, it says that if they are no longer in use, that they have to be removed within a certain time period. So how are we going to manage this? I mean, is there an annual inspection of these? Is there an annual filing of something to tell you that they're still in use? Or how are you going to manage to make sure these are removed?
That's, that's existing language in there now, and we're not changing that. That is one of the things that we would just have to become aware of it. We don't have an annual inspection or report on existing towers. Just have to be something we've become aware of and then take action against the, the property owner or the tower owner.
I think we can come up with a better answer than that. Maybe, Mr. Maginelli, we can staff that item and come up with a way to manage this since we're putting it into ordinance.
Mr. Cook, did you have a question?
Thank you. Chris, when I read the ordinance, it said this, these communication towers and antennas were only going to be permitted in commercial and industrial zones.
No, the, what we're, what we're actually changing is a way to allow antennas to be attached either to, like the side of a building or a rooftop, where we don't allow them now. We already allow all the towers. There is a process, we've established a process in the ordinance, whereas those can be approved administratively if they meet the requirements of the ordinance. The antenna is either on the building or on the roof. And what we said, say there is that we would only approve them administratively in the commercial or industrial districts. If they are in the, in the residential district, say on an apartment or, you know, hospitals and things like that are in residential districts at times, at that point, we'd make them go through the conditional use process in a residential area.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Preister.
Mayor, I'll move to approve ordinance number 3886.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you.
Item A is ordinances for public hearing, second reading, we have none. Item 9, ordinances for introduction, first reading. Item A is ordinance number 3887, rezoning lot 1, Southeast Plaza from BGH to ML for the purpose of light, industrial use. Applicant is Brent Beller for Fuller, excuse me, Fulham Camp Doyle and Jobin. Location is 909 Fort Crook Road North. I'll read the title. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 909 Fort Crook Road North, more particularly described in section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide for an effective date. This is first reading of the ordinance. It'll have second reading and public hearing on October 23, and will be accompanied by a redevelopment plan.
Thank you, Mr. Maginelli.
Item 10 is public hearing on matters other than ordinances. We have none. Item 11, resolutions, we have none. Item 12, current business. Subitem A is approval and of an authorization for the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement with Sarpy County for information technology and public safety records management support services. ITSS in the amount of $97,750, PSR, or PSRMSS in the amount of $37,588.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion to approve of and authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal cooperation agreement as just stated, in the amount of $97,750 and the additional amount of $37,588.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion, questions? Mr. Modri.
Thank you. Yeah, this is, this comes up for extension every year, and the last couple of years I have brought up that we have never utilized our number of hours under this agreement. And so we, we end up paying a much higher rate for those support hours than, you know, than is kind of advertised by the number of hours and the dollar amount listed here. Over the last five years, we've averaged 877.2 hours that we've utilized, and with the costs. cost involved, that's come out to $109.94 per hour. Are we locked into this 97,750? You know, we say it's at, for 1,150 hours, which would be $85 an hour. Can we go back and tell them we want 1,000 hours at the $85 an hour, or?
Chief, can I have you take the podium, please?
Yes, Steve.
Thank you.
Well, I can't speak for Sarpy County. I can tell you the past history, and one of the things that, I had your email, it's very hard for me to put five years of what has happened in the city into an email. But one of the things is, the city actually had, prior to our agreement with that, had two IT people on there, and we had some difficulties in that. And one of the things that I view this at, it's like going to your general doctor. If you go in there and need a knee replacement, they're going to send you to a specialist. I think Sarpy, and I've talked to them about this before, is we get 24-hour, seven-day-a-week support, for, especially for the police and fire that work 24/7. We get security, which we've already had several issues in the city that we've, we've been hacked into, that they're always working to try to shore up those holes. We get, actually, administrators, not only just for the help desk, but we get the people that do the, the IT. So I think for them, they look at, we could, in my analogy, you couldn't go hire one person with benefits for $97,000. So, and I know it's, it's a guess, and this year especially, with us losing the 300 and some thousand, and moving that other support into there for the FRMS and LMS, we'll have a better handle on it. I believe that we'll always try to negotiate with them for a lower number, which we did drop 50 hours this year. We, I think we dropped at $2,000. But I do think that there's, and I don't know where that breaking point is, Mr. Modri, of they're going to say, we can't do it if we only, if you only charge us for 500 hours, we can't keep this kind of support for the city. And I think they've kind of made those same remarks to other Papillion and La Vista. They have to have some kind of a break even to keep that kind of staff on board.
Because, because the way it's set up now, 97,750 for 1,150 hours, it's $85 an hour, and then they said if you go over that, it's still $85 an hour, so.
And the other thing is, I don't think that they're, don't take this wrong, Mr. Sullivan, but they're not like the lawyer. They don't, when I, I can tell you that I look at the monthly reviews of what they charge us. And what they do is, they take, they make a ticket for every pair that's called in or emailed into them. I've sat over there, especially in the last four months, I can tell you, I would guess no less than 20 hours with their support, and brought them over to the new city hall, and I haven't seen one hour of those charged. And I don't know that I want to get into those type, you know, situations. I think we're getting a very good deal for the amount of money we're paying, if you're asking my opinion.
Yeah. Last year, or just ending on 30 September here, we used 934 hours, so we foresee using an extra $200.
I foresee that we'll be, we did drop it 50 hours, like I said. We also have the entire city hall and all of the infrastructure here to move up this year, which is the reason we put that in a buffer in there. And, and next year, we'll have a better handle on it, and I think we can ask them, always ask them. But I do believe there is, and I don't know what that number is, I can't speak for Sarpy, but I do believe there's a number that they'll say, I'm, you know, we have to have this much money, even if you use less hours, just to keep the support you're asking of us.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Manjumali.
Yes, the, if you notice, the total value of this contract is significantly under what it was in prior years, and I had that same question, Mr. Modri, and we are going to monitor this for the first six months, see how we get, and then we'll be in a better position to look at next year's agreement.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, two, two areas of concern or questions. They do offer training. I don't know how much we take advantage of that, but from reading that, it sounds like in different programs, they do offer training that is free, where we can send employees up there.
That's a very good point. They actually have a contract with that, that gives all the city employees free training for anything, all the new windows, any of the new Excel that's coming out and updated, and, and those are part of that contract, yes.
I think we should, you know, as we can, take advantage of that. My second question is, does this require us to upgrade, like, police radios, fire radios, laptops, servers, routers, switches, any software or hardware? I know that maybe as, maybe they step into new programs, or, and I'm not, I can't tell you a lot about computers, but I would imagine they want certain speeds and certain things to occur. Are we lagging to where we're gonna have to spend a significant amount of money to step up to where they, the level they want us to be?
That was a lot of questions, but as far as the IT part of that, I would say no. In, in the budget, we started about five years ago on a rotating basis with computers, and, and what we found out, what we're buying, and we're, we're using the county for their buying power, because they're using the other cities to help us get a lower price, is that everything's on a rotation basis, and we have about a four-year actual service contract with them. It doesn't mean that we get rid of con, or computers at the end of four years, but after four years, if something catastrophic, the hard drive goes out of them, they end up, you know, the power supplies are that, it becomes, and then we replace the computer, because typically, once you start putting money into a four-year-old computer, you just keep money, and the new computers probably, pretty soon in, in another year, you'll have half or more of the price of the computer. So we do those kind of rotating things every year, and you've seen in the budget, the county goes through and looks at our infrastructure, our switches and those type things. And I think we've got that down now to where, instead of going and buying all this stuff at once, if you look at this year's budget, we just, we, we've got them staggered out, so that every year, we buy a few and replace them and keep that going. But, and then the radio question you asked, I think you've seen that within the budget, you know, the fire and the police, and even the public works, we've had to spend money because of the new upgrade. The system we are running on now is 1995, and it's, it's, it's on its last breath, and the new radios, the old radio infrastructure won't work with, it'll work, but it won't go for the future. So we're starting to buy this year, I know the police has been on a couple of years, and we're starting this year, and we'll phase that in over the next two or three years. And then I think that system's got another life expectancy of 15 years.
And also, do they back up everything for us?
That, we do, we do back up. I, I won't tell you exactly how we do everything, but we do take stuff off-site. It used to be Iron Mountain or that, that site is done, and then we do a nightly backup that is kept on premise. And they do do that, that is correct.
Sarpy County does that backup?
They do, they have the equipment, and we, they do the backup, and then we have it taken off-site. That is correct.
So if something crashed, and we lost stuff, there'd be a backup within hours or a day or two?
It's according to how, what it was, but typically, every day at the end, at somewhere after midnight, everything that's done that day is put in a secure location. And then about every two weeks, it's according to how fast this thing fills up, that information is taking off, is taken completely off-site.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
I just want to make a comment. A lot of you weren't here prior to us using Sarpy County's IT, and for years, the city was kind of behind the curveball in regard to maintaining technology system. It's kind of amazing how they pieced the thing together to make it work. And the city at that time made a decision based on experiences that other cities were having with using Sarpy IT to convert, basically remove our IT department and use the county's. It was like night and day, and we were able to avoid a lot of expenses, because we just simply were using their infrastructure instead of building ours. And their service is better than anybody that I've ever dealt with. If I could use their IT in my office, I'd use it.
And just to say that, I didn't ask for this job. When that happened, the city was out of internet for about two and a half to three weeks. They couldn't email, they didn't have anything with the current system. The fire department has never been, was never on the city's network, and I'll just leave it at that. I, from what I, I know of IT, and, you know, they came to me and asked, and we worked with Sarpy, and I agree with Mr. Sullivan. The other thing, y'all, you do have to consider, no matter what we end up doing, if we did our own again, we are tied to Sarpy through the 911 system, especially the police and the fire. All of our FRMS, all of our LMS, all the stuff that they do mobile data computers, everything is within Sarpy County. So it makes sharing information, especially among law enforcement and the fire departments, a lot easier.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate what Councilman Cook said about the training. I did attend one of the training sessions, and there were two other city employees in that same training session. So I know we have used it in the past, and the quality of that training was very good. I would just ask, though, in the last six months, I don't remember ever getting an email of any training that's being offered currently. So maybe you could just check with them and see if there's some available.
I will. I know they sent that out to all, but I'll make sure that everybody's on that list.
Okay. And they may have sent it out, but I, I haven't seen any. And it's always good to check prices and, and check value, which is what we're asking. But in my view, this amount of money, and I would concur with Mr. Sullivan and your assessment, before and after, and this is not only a good value, but we get very good service. I've called them on the weekend, and at odd times, when I had a glitch in trying to get stuff, and they were right there, very responsive, and corrected the problem. So I think we're getting a very good deal.
Thank you.
Mr. Cook.
I'll make a motion.
I think, I think we have a motion. A second, we're in discussion. Are there any other questions for Chief Betts? Thank you very much. So call the vote? Thank you.
All voted yes. Thank you.
Item B is approval of and authorization for the mayor to sign the fifth and final amendment to the redevelopment agreement and settlement and release agreement between the city of Bellevue and World Baseball Village LLC.
Mr. Burns.
I'll make a motion that we approve and authorize for the mayor to sign the fifth and final amendment to the redevelopment agreement and settlement and release agreement between the city of Bellevue and World Baseball Village LLC.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes. Thank you.
Item C is the approval of and authorization for the mayor to sign the underwriting agreement with DA Davidson and Company.
Mr. Burns.
I make a motion that we approve and authorize for the mayor to sign the underwriting agreement with DA Davidson and Co.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion, questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Item D is discussion and council recommendation regarding city-owned property on South 36th Street, north of Cape Hart Road.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to start the discussion, we're looking at whether or not we put this property on the market, or offer it to somebody. It was my understanding, at least five years ago, we did have a real estate agent marketing it. So I've never heard it was taken off the market. I don't exactly know the status. We had looked at that whole parcel of property. We had essentially divided the property, determined what part we wanted for the park, and maintained. Maybe, it's between 100 and 120 acres roughly, that the city will maintain as a park. We sold the western part of it, and it's being developed now, and we sold off some right on 36th and Cape Hart. And this was part of it that was determined, probably not the best development, because of the drainage, the hill, the, the area. I'm open to holding on to it if we have a need, and open to assessing what we may need or use the property for. But I just make the point that, at one point, we had told the real estate developer that it was for sale. So our property was being marketed for a time. I just don't know that we've changed that status.
The property was listed through Hike Real Estate with Dave Dunn, and I believe what the city simply did is allowed that listing to expire and not renew it.
Thank you.
And I believe it's lots four and five in that area is what we were listing in there, which would be the lot immediately adjacent to the road that takes you down to the school, and then the lot immediately behind it to the south.
Mr. Cook.
And I, I was the one that had asked about this with some communications with Mr. Manjumali, because I had been contacted by the developer that had, unfortunately, with Mr. Dunn, who used to work for Hike Real Estate, this all happened about the time that, he passed away shortly after it. And so it was more or less being contacted by the developer and just wanting to know the status, wanting to know the status about it. And so I felt that this was, if we wanted to discuss it, which, which we have, that we would at least then make a motion. And I think the feeling was that the land is not up for sale, we're gonna leave it as is, city-owned, and that will, with 36th Street improvements, it's gonna also include improvements to 37th Street that comes from the school up, and that we would just leave it basically at that. It's more or less just sort of putting an official vote on, on a, an agreement, an attempt to purchase it by a developer.
My only comment was regarding to the real estate and what the council wants to do would probably be more tuned to doing in closed session, because it has to do with negotiations as well as pricing and, and strategy with respect to how that property may be sold. So I think that would be best done in a closed session environment.
Today, or at a later date?
You could do it today, you could do it at a later date. You can always go into closed session on a item that's on the agenda. But at this point, when we start talking about why or why not are we marketing it, or whether we're gonna hold it and so forth, I think that all goes into the strategy and negotiations of when you're selling the property, and I don't think that would probably be appropriate for a public hearing.
So would it be appropriate to make a motion in reference to what has been pending from an offer?
No, I don't think so. From the standpoint of that, it is not, there's no offer that's a part of our agenda today, and so we'd be unable to do that. What I would suggest is if you, if we want to discuss this further, it's, obviously, you can go into closed session now. We could put it on closed session for next meeting. That gives some time for some people to think about it, and then we can discuss those issues at that time. Only from the standpoint, I, I wouldn't want to go into closed session and then have to come back to other current business.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Shannon.
Mayor, I'll renew my call for a cost report on this project. I know this project predates both Mr. Burns and myself on the council, and so I'd like to see what the cost of the entire parcel was, what we've gotten back out of the parcel, what our costs have been, so that we know what, you know, the citizens of Bellevue were out for this so far, and what we need to get out of this last lot to, to break even.
Well, I, I can answer to some of that. The entire Daniels Farm was bought at 20,000 an acre. And currently, right now, we custom farm it, so we're paying a farmer to farm it, and we take the, pay a set fee for his services, and then we're at the risk of whatever the commodities market is for the crop that's on that farm.
Mr. Hanson.
I just think it might be a good idea to put this on for the next meeting, for a closed session, to discuss marketing, real estate, and ideas what the council wants to do.
So it's on the agenda as discussion, so we'll just move on to the next item. Thank you.
Item E is permission to purchase a 2017 Super Products Camel Combo Sewer Truck per Minnesota DOT contract for $426,171.70.
Mr. Shannon.
Mayor, I would move to approve the purchase of a camel for $426,171.70.
And a truck, too?
We need the sewer truck added to that. I need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion, questions? See none? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item Thank you. Item thirteen, administration report. Comments be limited to the current report. Are there any questions for Mr. Manjimali? Mr. Modri.
Yes. In Mr. Burke's report, he talked about, something about the status of Socrate's Open Data Portal. What's going on there?
Right now, with the Open Data Portal, there are some things that we're not really satisfied with, both on the customer service side and the appearance side of the information. So, we're looking at another approach, maybe to get out of the agreement and not implement the portal. We think that there are other things. In fact, Phil Davidson and I met today to talk a little bit about achieving the intent of our ordinance that we have for Open Data Ordinance. So, we're looking at different options other than Socrate right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? See none? We'll move on to item number fourteen, public request to be heard. Any members of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number Thirty-Five Regarding the Principles of Conduct and Decorum, which states any statement made during city council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city official employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal impertinent or slanderous attacks on individuals, regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, a city official, or employer, and a member of the general public. And City Code Section Two-Dash-Six-Eight Regarding the Manners of Addressing the Council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted on the outside of the council chambers.
Good evening. Chuck Frederick, One Five One One Madison Street. First thing I want to do is I want to thank the park department for doing such a good job on the Jewel Park at the Dog Park. They really do a good job down there, and there are lots of people come down there. I have been suggesting for a number of times that we need another dog park in the southwest part of Bellevue. And I think that would cost that much, but it would be, I think, as needed and be good for the people down that way. And Mr. Shannon, I want to thank you for representing the city in the early aerospace parade. I believe you're the only elected or appointed official that was in the parade. It's a shame that somebody wrote in to the Bellevue leader and lied about what, about some of the things that weren't true about you. And there was a correction in the Bellevue leader, but obviously, there's people who will do anything to try to get you recalled. And I know for myself that when I was being, trying to get recalled, when I was in the city council, excuse me, there was somebody who wrote a letter, a negative letter about me and the, and the Bellevue leader. And I had gone to that person, talked to that person previously, so I was a little surprised. So, I went and talked to that person. He didn't write the letter. So, I, I hope that the newspapers will make sure that when they print a letter that is, is, is accurate and the right person has written it. Now, the thing that people, they're not talking about too, is that I don't think that you're going to get enough, they're going to get enough signatures to recall you anyway, but if they did, it's going to cost the city, us taxpayers, over thirty thousand dollars. And that isn't even mentioned by anybody at this point right now. But we don't have the money to spend on something frivolous like this for, for thirty thousand dollars when we have, we have sewer problems, we have baseball village problems. I, I, we need, we need to use our money much more wisely. And it's a, so, all I can say is that it, it's time to start getting down to the serious things we have to do with our money. I did notice last time I spoke, a couple of meetings ago, that I mentioned about the two-year budget, and I was corrected that we have a one-year budget. I remember back when the two-year budget was supposed to be the greatest thing ever, better than sliced bread, and now all of a sudden, it's one-year budget. I am not sure who's responsible for it, but I was mentioning before that one-year budget, usually you can't keep the can down the road. Also, on the thing that we don't have yet, I've been talking about many, many times, is the monthly balance sheet versus a monthly financial statement. There are people up here that don't know the difference, but the monthly financial statement, which I've been getting many of over the years, is a multi-page, multi-numbered pages, and the monthly balance sheet is a one-page item. Most cities do a one-page item on a monthly balance sheet. It's time we started doing it too. In regard to that twelve D, that property that you put on hold on, on South Thirty-Sixth Street, north of Cape Hart, I thought that that was going to be used to put a new library. That was what I had been told by, I think, the library committee. And I know some of the land was sold. I thought the land that was sold was going to be where the library was, but I think you really want to look into that, because we do need another library down there. And that's, that, that's a, they thought it was a good spot for it, and I think it's a good spot for it too. The other thing too, by the way, is that almost a half million dollars for the Super Products Camel Combo Sewer Truck. Well, the good news is it's from Minnesota, and anything from Minnesota is really good.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Welch, and I just wanted to say that I feel that Bellevue has a real black eye on themselves because of the World Baseball Village. And I think it would be in our best interest at times to do everything we can to make amends to the people that paid money to come here, and then for whatever reason, their money was not refunded to them. There's a lot of questions and concerns from citizens that are saying, okay, they paid their money, where did it go? And, you know, we want to try and rebuild our reputation of Bellevue to be a great place to come, a great place to visit, a great place to go. And so, I think, you know, I'm not saying the city's responsible for it. I mean, we've all, as public citizens, I'm sure, made investments. They didn't go the right way. We've made decisions. And hopefully, we as a city can learn from this and, again, make amends to the people that have never been here before and help them feel better about coming back. Thank you.
Are there others? See none? We'll go ahead and, item number sixteen for adjournment.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion, and a second by Cook. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote. All voting yes. Thank you, and good night.